Okay, we'll remove visitors to council number one. Dan, anything?
No.
No. Coy? Doug, anything to add or change?
Uh, nothing on that.
Okay. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Thanks, Coy. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same side. Motion passes unanimously, Linda. Out of the consent agenda, everything's in your packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Lonny.
I gotta come on the resolution they're granting the variants out. Now, we had no minutes, right? Anybody else copy the minutes there?
No, there's no minutes. No, I didn't get them done in time to put them on this.
Put it in the packet.
To get them in the packet.
They're in with the packet?
No, I didn't have them done in time to put them in the packet.
No.
No, so there's no minutes from the last.
I guess I just wasn't comfortable the way that went, that some people were ruled and the way that was all held out at that last meeting.
Okay, did you want to remove that and discuss it more, or?
I feel we might have.
So move that down to old business number four. Remove two F, move it to whole business number four. Okay. Now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Coy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dan. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same side. Motion passes unanimously. We are gonna move to K personnel. She first has two things. The fact that if you want to address this, we've got them both in our packet.
I have any questions, I guess, with any of the memorials there?
Well, the second one, first, congratulations on Liberty's career. I know I missed a little motion.
Yeah, we just took a little thing, so.
No, I don't have any questions on that one. It's not, let's do that one first. Any questions on that? That's common practice.
Yeah, yeah.
Handler to.
Yeah. It's just gotta be for a dollar, dollar amount for legal purposes to say he doesn't have liability anymore and stuff like that.
Okay, we need a motion on that, Linda? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the sale of Liberty to Liberty's handler, Sergeant Hanson, for the sale price of one dollar.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same side. Motion passes unanimously. How's your new dog working out?
Uh, needs to work on its personal skills a little bit.
So do we all.
Yeah, but he probably don't chew off arms, so. No, it's a, it's a good dog. It's, it's just needs more interaction with people.
Okay, number one, any questions for you?
Just adding up, you know, just adding hours and stuff.
Right, right. Yeah, the same thing that the council agreed to before. We only got one out of those two. There was two that were up, but one didn't pass the psychological stuff and that's. Yeah, we're back to the, this would give us our second, so.
Okay.
Sure.
Any questions? No questions on that. I suppose there'd be a motion on that too, Linda. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the hiring of a part-time officer.
Motion.
Thanks, Doug. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Thanks, Coy. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same side. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Hope you do better.
Thank you. And thanks for seeing me earlier.
Yep. Nope, please, now please go home.
Did you bring any hands down? Thanks.
Thank you, and everybody have a good Christmas.
Thank you. Okay, we're on the public forum. I don't have any comment cards. So, no public hearing, no community reports. On the old business number one, chicken request. You've got some information. I guess this was kicked back to the council from planning and zoning. There was some information gathered. Linda, I believe, sent out something to all the surrounding communities together, what everybody's limit on chickens were. And I believe Mr. Priver was asking to increase that by, and I don't remember off the top of my head if he had a number.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Eighteen to twenty-four.
Eighteen to twenty-four.
I think it's a bit excessive.
I got one, I guess. I was over in another neighboring town. This is just for everybody to chew on. A gentleman has, they can, they're allowed six chickens there. He's got them fenced in, and his neighbor who's lived next to him, for, since he moved into the house, didn't know he had chickens for a year and a half. Just don't have them there.
Yeah, I wish he would've came tonight because, you know, the, the number of, to be fair with everyone else, you know, being he does have a big lot like that, would we require they be in dual locations or something, you know? How we had a run and everything for him, but you don't have a big flock of, but.
I don't, I don't know. That's just a thought.
I just thought about it, you know, if you have a double lot, maybe you get a double limit on chickens, you know, six chickens per lot, I don't know.
Yeah, I like the idea that Doug said, you know, you gotta have two coops and two runs.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if it's hens, I mean, not that I'm a chicken expert by any means, but hens don't make near as much noise as if you had twelve.
Well, I said that neighbor said.
Twelve roosts out there. I mean, that would be maybe something considered.
One room should be too many in the house.
Yeah, I, you know, I, the hens don't make, we had chickens all growing up, but they definitely make a whole heck of a lot of noise, so. It's just an odd discussion to have.
Well, it's getting more and more, I think, you know, and, you know, so.
Isn't, isn't that the way it's written? Don't we have it per dwelling?
Yeah, per resident.
Isn't that the way it's written? Whereas if we would've wrote it per lot, or, you know, something similar to that, I'm, I'm just to chew on.
There's only one town I could find that did it by size of lots.
Yeah.
Which one was that?
Um, it's, I'm there, is it St. Charles?
Yeah, Wabashaw.
Wabashaw, and even their largest lot, anything over forty-five thousand square feet is six.
And is the main reason municipalities limit the number of chickens to six per lot, is it mainly just for noise?
Yeah, intention to it.
I think it's the course of sanitation, yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of, I didn't ask why they limit it to no, but I couldn't find anybody that had more than six.
I mean, not saying it's going to happen, but all you gotta do is go down to Silver Lake Park and see what the geese have done to the park. And I know it's their own property, but it's still, to me, if you start increasing it over six, where almost every other town is at per max, you're just opening the doors.
Some don't allow any.
Right.
The other argument is the sparse sanitation goals, like they, it's believed that they attract pests. The food that you put out for them also attracts mice and things like that. That's the other aspect of the sanitation issues.
Yeah, but you get that with anything.
Yeah.
You, I can remember years ago, pouring a driveway at a house cement and watching, couldn't get to the garage, but watching the rats jump up on the cooler and eat the dog food and get rid in the garage, so.
Yep, agree.
To me, I don't, I don't see a problem.
What's our limit now?
Six.
Six.
Working out some sort of arrangement with an oversized lot like that. And then the other thing too is what they're trying to do is they're trying to go all organic. They're trying to be self-sustaining on everything that they're going in their garden. They're basically trying to be healthy, is one of the big things that he said. Actually, it has to be eighteen eggs a day. He's like, they eat a lot. You know, that's one of the things that they're doing, is they're trying to stay in, good for them. Like I said, I don't have a problem if you want to deal with a lot, you'll probably just reach over and slap me with it, kick it back to the planning commission, work out something for extremely large lots.
I don't mind what Wabashaw has there, the other size of the lot, but the number of chickens will make it difficult what we have now, but I can see where you have a, basically a triple lot like he's got.
Right.
If you have a triple lot, you probably have more room for a few more chickens. Twenty-four, eh, maybe not twenty-four, but double that if you've got three times the square footage of the normal lot. I think that's a great idea. I think we should take that back to planning and zoning.
It's not, actually, it's not in the land use ordinance, so it wouldn't fall under planning and zoning. It's not in our land use ordinance.
So what's in that?
Is it ninety? It's under animals.
Oh, so it's just under our general.
Yeah. So it's, it's not in your land use ordinance.
Huh, maybe we should make it in the land use ordinance, so it's planning and zoning.
How about, how about we have an ordinance in place, and you just left it at a multi-lot complex or something, a case-by-case situation? You could give them double, or you could, you know, define spending on the size, or something along that line.
Let's come up with a max number now, though.
The, the only thing I see is you gotta put in, somehow put in the wording, that if a neighbor, if they do, are allowed to have twelve chickens, twelve or whatever number over the six, and a neighbor complains about the odor, they've gotta be able to do something about it.
They gotta have a legitimate complaint, too.
Right.
You know, I don't, I mean, it's not one of these anonymous, throw something under the bus complaints.
No, I get that, but I mean, if their neighbor that lives adjacent to them has an issue, that we're going to follow through to try to resolve the issue?
I mean, we had that.
We had that situation out off of Third Street and Fifth Avenue. A gentleman had dogs and went clean up the, uh, the kennel and brought off into a trough, and they had like a, yeah, it was nasty.
I think you have better control on that, too, if you kept the coop size the same.
Right.
That you could only have the six, you know what I mean?
Because we have that there.
If you had the two, then your facility is the same size. That's what's supposed to look, work well, you know what I mean? You're not rubbing it up. That's my thought.
And there's room within our coop size, because as you have to have at least two square feet per chicken, and their sixty square foot is the maximum on the chicken coop.
So you're gonna have the coops spaced so many feet apart? Otherwise, if they're right next to each other, it's like having one big one.
I, if you had two, I've, personally, I would say you can have one chicken coop if you put, up to the, if they were, we would decide to say, hey, we can, you have a double lot, or wherever, you can have a double size, instead of having a second coop, plenty of space in the one coop.
How many square feet is it?
Sixty square feet maximum, and you have to have at least two square feet per chicken.
Pretty small.
Chicken runs must not exceed the hundred and twenty square feet or six feet in height, must be completely enclosed with golden wire or wood. Chicken feed must not be, must be stored in rodent or raccoon approved containers. And then, sorry, in here, chick, the premises where chickens are kept must be maintained in a healthy and sanitary condition and in a manner that will prevent noxious or offensive odors from being carried to adjacent properties. Chicken coops or runs may be inspected at any reasonable time by the city animal control officer. That's not me, is it?
Oh.
I believe it is.
I think it is.
I go to all the weeds.
To determine compliance with the ordinance.
It's a long permit.
Weed, or, outfit chicken inspector.
Weed inspector, now you're a coop inspector.
That's awesome. Gets better everywhere.
So we can work up an amendment to the ordinance and bring it back to your next meeting if you want to go in that direction, to allow up to six additional chickens?
If they have twice the square footage in their lot.
Okay.
That gives them a place to position it away from a property line or neighbors or that type of thing. And you think if we have the right to inspect it, if we have a complaint, then we can inspect it and have conversations.
Okay.
Sound good, everybody?
Okay.
Well, you know how the inspection goes.
I'll, I'll put that on my list.
You don't have to find a new inspector?
Nope. All right, so we'll get you back in the next meeting for the chicken, um, number.
Once, come January, Chris is gonna start passing out, you're now the animal control inspector, and you're gonna be the weed inspector. I can see this coming.
Does he get a badge?
Does he get a badge?
No.
Don't need to speak to that.
Um, we're gonna move on to F two, old business, old stone water tower. So I guess this is just an update as far as a meeting that's proposed, if I understand.
You wanna take it?
Take it, you.
Go ahead.
Whatever. Okay, we had a meeting with the Dodge County Historical Society, trying to resolve the issue. I suggested that maybe we negate the old agreement and write up an agreement where they can use the water tower under our discretion for shows, historic events, the festival in the park, and I thought we had something going. But they were going to meet that night. Did you come up with something?
Well, we did have a meeting that evening, shortly after the meeting we were talking about, of the water tower ad hoc committee. And our board of directors did discuss it extensively, but did not draft in formal language that was voted upon and approved. So we're still in the discussion phase as far as our organization is concerned.
Okay. Um, then we had a meeting ourselves, and it's pretty much that we re-elected to negate the old agreement and move forward with a new agreement, as I had stated before. So we're moving forward.
So you're seeking approval of the cast and city council to nullify the nineteen ninety-seven agreement?
Yes, and create this new one. It still gives you access as long as we are notified. Any improvements that are done on the lot needs to be approved by the city council.
That would be part of the new agreement.
Right, yes. But if they want to use it for an event or anything, as long as we know in advance, we will unlock the doors and lock them afterwards. You're more than welcome to use it.
Well, that could be ironed up, you know, at some point, or later possibly. Now, wouldn't the director of partner recreation, or that supervisor be the one we would normally contact initially?
No, he would come to the city council.
Really?
Yep. So.
Do you have a, a sort of agreement started?
Yep.
Anything in writing that?
Yep.
Can we see that?
Absolutely.
So, just, okay, just for tonight, though, what you're asking for is the council to say, let's scrap the nineteen ninety-seven agreement and come up with a new agreement.
And approve this agreement.
Well, I'm not gonna approve anything. I haven't seen that.
I know, I know. I agree.
I would say we.
I didn't think it was gonna go far yet.
Right, get this out for everybody to look at and come back at the next meeting to have a discussion about approving anything. I wouldn't.
That's, that's fine. It's fine.
Well, just out of curiosity, now this, Janice was part of your team on committee.
Well, when Janice called me, I, she'd asked to be on the committee, and my thought there was, when we got a new agreement hammered out, that
Right.
Part of the agreement, my vision was that we would have more than a committee of two. We'd have several people appointed by the city council, several people from the historic society, and then possibly a council representative, like we do on all the other committees that we have. And that was what I was, said, yeah, that would be a part of that. So that was what I, my.
So it wasn't necessary for her to be a part of?
Not necessarily. No, I, I was thinking more of the committee going down the road and going forward, yeah. I mean, anybody's input's welcome, but that was what I was, where I was at anyway, in my mind.
I, I thought more too under the lines when you said hammer this out, I thought it would be input, input from both sides.
Yeah, and then the thing we, we, this is a start. Somebody's gotta come up with something, I understand, and then we, that's why I say we don't, I'm not gonna ask for a vote tonight to approve anything.
So this is just a working document at the moment?
Yeah, it's just a piece of paper right now.
Right, that's it.
Yep.
Chris, at, at the meeting that we held, we, at, the historic society asked us, as representatives of the city, if we would draft a new agreement.
Okay.
And I said, we have no meeting of the minds at this point. We don't know what you want, and we need to know what you want before we can draft an agreement. Would you please provide us with something in writing that states what you want, and that is how we left the meeting.
Okay.
That's not exactly my recollection of it, that, that we asked them to draft anything.
You asked me if we would draft an agreement.
I didn't.
Yes, you did.
You specifically asked if we would be willing to draft the agreement.
I said, I remember you asking us for our input on agreements.
Correct.
If I recall it, I asked you to draft an agreement.
You did.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody, for the input. It sounds like we still have work to do. I think it's a start that we got together at the same table and met. We got one, one for something to fill it out there, and if you guys want to look at that, come back with something, and we can get on our meeting schedule to get that hammered out.
Can we set a meeting reg tonight, so we both sides know? Other than trying to communicate after the fact?
Because part of the reason for drafting this at this point was, at the council meeting in October, you said you wanted this wrapped up by the end of the year.
Yep.
And that's what we were working towards, which is why we asked for input from the historic society as to what they wanted in the agreement.
Okay, but that's probably not gonna happen now.
No.
So. We'll just get, we'll put that in the rearview mirror, we'll go forward. I want a lot of things done by the end of the year that didn't happen, so.
Do you have a date to find, Dan?
Yeah, is it, the people involved on the dates timed? Do you want to set something now? Do you want to talk after the meeting?
I'll make anything work.
Well, I can't, I'm gonna be there on the historic side, so. I think Don and, or Linda and.
Jim Jekyll was our other representative.
Melissa Ferrish should probably talk and get a date and email that out to everybody. They're two representatives, they're supposed to be meeting.
You can make anything work.
Yep.
So if you guys, Mel, Linda, do you guys want to get together for a date and then let Lonny know, let Coy know, and we'll get together then?
We can start an email chain with the original trips people that were at the meeting. I think that would make the most sense, as opposed to two of us trying to reach out.
Sure, whatever you guys want to do.
Sure.
Yep, sounds good. Sound good?
Okay.
So as far as the action, I suppose we need to entertain a motion to set aside the nineteen ninety-seven agreement and state that we're gonna work on the next one, or will we do that after we have something in place?
I'm gonna say we have nothing in place.
Because nineteen ninety-seven agreement expires on a certain date in January anyway, doesn't it?
No.
Is it, is it perpetuity?
The MHS agreement.
Oh, the MHS, okay. That's why, there's more to it. So we can just leave that like it is and work on this, and then at the time we'll entertain a motion, whatever is agreed upon, if the council agrees with it, we can move to then replace that agreement with a new agreement.
Are you trying to have us back at the next meeting, you think?
It depends on their meeting. If they have it back by the next meeting, we'll have it on the agenda, or it'll be on the meeting as soon as they have their meeting. I know everybody's busy this time here with the holidays and that, so I'm not gonna say I have to have it back by the January test date, but.
And plus, keep in mind, historic society meets once a month, city council meets twice.
Okay, yeah, we'll work it out at the next meeting, whenever it works for both organizations. Okay? Okay. Thank you for getting together and getting something started, and we'll keep working to get a resolution. Number three, old business, discuss two thousand seventeen street project assessments. I believe that was what I had asked to be put on the agenda regarding the interest that's charged on the assessments. And I would like to make a motion that we waive the interest if the assessment is paid by December thirty-first.
Is that before?
After that, we're going to tell them.
We're fine. That's fine.
I'll entertain a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Coy. Any other further discussion?
Do I just say anything?
No.
No.
No, all right.
Thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same side? Motion passes unanimously, Linda. Thank you. I can talk to you later. On the G, new business, fee schedule, approve abbreviated publication. Whoop, whoop, did I do something?
Number four.
Oh, number four, sorry. Yep, resolution granting images of variants.
I just wanted to talk on this a little bit because of the way it was brought up. Apparently, the rules that they had, I watched the planning meeting before that, and the rule that Coy had there, and then Lonny had a whole different set, or, and they came from, from, where was that?
No, it's stuff that I read was out of the current ordinance.
Yes, and what Coy was reading was the old ordinance.
Actually, what I have is the current ordinance that was handed to me for planning commission.
Well, it's not, it's not the current ordinance. What we were talking about the last meeting was the current ordinance.
I, I just thought it had to be talked about because here's the planning commission working under one set of ordinances, and then another one comes up that night, and, and now we're supposed to be taking the information and, and then voting on it. And I don't like voting against any committee. That's what we have them in place for. And by voting for it, I would've been voting against it. And let's see, I voted against it, and it was for that reason. I just wondered that, wanted to make sure that the committee and the council, whoever decides this stuff is going by the same rules, that we can't, I thought it looked pretty.
Yeah, there is a complete set of our ordinance, including our zoning ordinance, available through the website and American Legal Publishing. So if there's ever a question about what the current ordinance is, it can be found there on the website.
Well, I think what he's kind of trying to get at politely is basically trying to say that I myself didn't appreciate kind of getting basically blindsided again with some information that I didn't get to see before a meeting, or getting invited in to talk to before a meeting, and then trying to get hammered on at the meeting. So either somebody needs to get their shit in the roll, and start getting other people informed, and quit blindsiding people, and this is the stuff that's gotta stop. I mean, I didn't have any, I mean, basically, I got set up here to take the fall. So obviously, somebody knew something was going on before the meeting.
Ac- actually, at the planning commission meeting, I believe that I did state that, um, party that was recommended for denial would have the option to appeal to the city council.
I'm not talking the appeal. I'm talking about bringing information, calling Lonny up and getting him in the office, giving him some information, and, and feeding him some stuff for him to come out here, which none of us have. You sat right next to me in the planning commission. I read out of a book right there, which Lonny did not have, that could not follow along.
I provided.
But Wayne Burton couldn't find it either.
Yeah, I, I provided everyone at the table with a copy of the current ordinance for the meeting in preparation for the appeal.
Can I just, one quick thing?
Sure.
Be, can we, I know we got, we're gonna, can we get a new set of ordinances out to anybody at the time of planning? And make sure, you know, have them turn in their books and give them a different one that has the most up-to-date, to make sure everybody's is up-to-date? So then, everybody's got exactly the same thing, instead of, maybe yours could be old, and there was updates, we didn't get them, or we didn't get it put in. Because I know how that.
Yeah, yeah.
When you change ordinances regularly, it changes like.
My, the book that I don't like, which Linda gave me, I haven't had that long. The one I like is my old one, because she knows I keep bringing that one. But this one I had, the up-to-date one, that was, what, three years ago I had?
We just updated them last year. I took everybody's planning commission books, wasn't it just last year, or was it the year before?
Well, would you like mine back?
If you want to give it to me, I'll go through it.
I can. Well, yeah, I guess basically the big thing here is, once again, information showing up at the start of the meeting, which no, all but one knew about. So.
It, it's the.
I didn't know about it.
I provided to everyone at the same time.
Right, yes, but that.
Well, either way, moving on, and the only other thing, though, too, is to have a formal appeal of something that you have to have voted on, too. I stated that at the meeting. We didn't even vote for the, the variants to have it denied or approved, and there was already somebody standing up appealing something that we hadn't even done yet. Put it up.
Okay.
No discussion either.
Thank you. Any else, Doug?
Nope, I just wanted to air that out a little bit.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve F number four, resolution granting the images there, it's from the last meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Second?
I'll second it.
Two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same side?
Aye.
D two, Dan, Chris, and Lonny, four, Coy and Doug against. Mayor's report, just a couple things.
Oh, you...
We gotta go back to fee schedule. Just went through that. Sorry, I can read really. Been that kind of day. New business, fee schedule, approve the abbreviated publication, which is in your packet.
So I need to have you do both?
Okay, so we need to do the...
Adopt a new fee schedule?
And then the abbreviated publication.
And then approve abbreviated publication.
Alright, fee schedule is in your packet, we reviewed it, we viewed it several times. I'll entertain a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented.
I'll make that one.
Thanks Dan, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor said aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign? Motion passes unanimously. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the abbreviated publication of said fee schedule in the required places.
I'll make that one.
Thanks Dan, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Lonnie, thank you. All in favor said aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Now each, mayor's report. Just a couple things, one, just wanted to thank, you know, we're at the end of the year, it's the last meeting of the year, that's the last scheduled meeting of the year. Call me for other emergency elaborate where you're getting it. So just thanks everybody for the work this year. I know as, you know, as you can tell during meetings, we don't always agree on every subject and that's okay. I think if you had five people that sat up here and we agreed on everything, I'll shake our head yes or I'll shake our head no on every single subject, I think people might wonder a little more than they do if we do have some disagreements and that's alright. I think five different people, as far as this position, and we have different people in different positions in the city, we should disagree on some things. I think how we resolve that is what people look at. So, all our resolutions aren't necessarily favorable to an individual who liked or didn't like what we came up with, but if we come up with a resolution, treat it with respect and have some reasoning, I think, you know, that's the best we can do. So I just wanna thank everybody for their work for the year. I've learned a lot as mayor in eleven and a half months of, I learned a lot of things that you do that I didn't think we did, like chickens. I had no idea that we spent time on chickens, so... But thank you for that. And we've had a little bit of good press in the paper here recently, you know, liquor store was highlighted again as far as its profitability and where it ranks as far as municipal liquor stores. And we're lucky to have that resource in town and what it pays for in the community. So again, it's always good to have something in the newspaper. So that's all I've got, everybody have a great holiday and the hot C F the first of the year. On to I, administrator's report.
Hi, so I did bring this from the, um...
Oh, can I say timeout for a little bit?
Yes.
I'm just gonna have to...
Yes.
To first time here, Billy. You wanna talk about chickens? I'm gonna give you just a quick update on what we already talked about on the agenda.
Okay.
And what we're gonna do is, the recommendation from council was to direct staff to come back with amendment to our ordinance to double the amount of chickens. And they'll come back to the next meeting with that, so that's what we kinda challenged them to do, to go from six to twelve.
Okay.
And they'll come back with a draft ordinance for us at the next meeting and do that.
Alright.
Wanna help you out?
Fair enough.
Help a much, yes, thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say about that, but I just figured maybe you just wanted an update or?
I'm very good with that.
Okay, alright, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you, I'm sorry I always leave.
Nope, that's fine.
Alright, Futurist Camp.
Yeah, thank you.
I know, that's a little bit unconventional. And it first came to my attention back in June of 2016 when I went to the LMC conference and we shared it with the Alliance for Innovation. They do a conference every year called Transforming Local Government and they combined their conference with the LMC conference in St. Paul in 2016. So it was my first exposure to the Alliance for Innovation and for the Futurist. Thank you, it's been on my radar for a little while, just looking for perhaps an opportunity or a way to, to work it out so that it wasn't a large expense in one particular year if I were to participate. So, in 2017, I did not go to a national conference. And I would then not go to a national conference in 2018 and combine what I would anticipate those two expenditures to be, to cover the cost of the Futurist Camp, which takes place in Madison, Wisconsin. And hopefully you got a little bit of an overview from my notes and I, I'm pretty sure these are the notes I had provided for the packet back in 2016 as well. The flavor being though that 2020 is spring for the United States historically and that is, will be a time of regeneration for our country. Also, it'll kind, it'll be the start of kinda Casin 2040 and the next twenty years for Casin. As an opportunity that, to take a look at things from a different perspective. And this is from Rebecca Ryan's book called Regeneration: Manifesto for America's Next Leaders. If America is going to regenerate to work better for more people, we have to put people back in the center of our thinking. We have to deeply consider whom we're regenerating for and how their lives will be better. Cities are for people, not cars. Schools are for learners, not unions. Homes are for families, not developers. Products are for customers, not the engineers who conceive them. Hospitals are for patients, not health insurance companies. Government is of, by, and for the people, not the politicians. So just an opportunity to take a new look at what it means to be part of the future of Casin and the United States as a whole. Why I would like the opportunity to go to Futurist Camp.
Okay, can you be able to bring us back some specific action items that we could do, implement into our...
Yes, actually, before I go, we can actually talk about specifically what my focus will be while I'm there. And then, there's a six month follow-up on that focus following the camp. So, our comprehensive plan will be complete at that time and the council could essentially choose from those potential projects. One, to, for to focus on is Futurist Camp. And then come back and work on that for the next six months.
Thank you. Thanks for taking that up and bringing it back to us, D two.
No problem.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I, I think you answered a couple of my questions. You said you didn't take a national trip either, you know, sixteen, seventeen? If I remember, your budget, do you have a thirty-five hundred dollar budget for the year, for your meetings and stuff, isn't that what you...
Well, I think I'm combined with clerk, or like...
Under administration, there were thirty-five...
Oh, is there one under administration one? Okay. I haven't spent it all, so I don't know what my upper limit is.
Two years combined, not no national on this, that was my...
Well, yeah, I, I was gonna say, business will be above and beyond that, but no, she said that she hasn't taken two nationals.
Yeah.
I mean, it answered some of my questions, kind of even asked it.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on I, number one.
I'll make the motion.
To...
Approve.
Okay. You have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor said aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign?
Aye.
Four to one, Coy. Against, there's four, four. On to G, engineers' report, discussion on the TAP grant, which Brandon did answer.
There's a handout, the handout before the meeting, should have four pages to it, the first one being a nice map, there are some areas circled that we're looking at, adding into the project and then some discussion items on the next two sheet, the infrastructure recommendations, over in the right margin there in red, and then a final sheet with some pretty pictures on it showing some potential improvements. But, take a step back before we kinda jump into those sheets there. At the last council meeting, you approved myself moving forward with developing the TAP application for a Safe Homes and School grant with a couple of, two discussion items or marching orders, if you will. The first was begin discussion with the school on their cost participation. Patrice and I met with the school, I believe it was on Tuesday before, excuse me, Monday before their board meeting, and we discussed it with staff and also the building committee about their cost particip- participation and the discussion of fifty-fifty cost participation. They're receptive of that. When they reviewed the final application, they were in favor of bringing that to the board at the appropriate time, once we get the application together. The second one was develop scope, that's what we're here tonight to talk about, some scope items. And then lastly, if we develop the scope, the intent would be to bring back the final final application in approvable resolution format at the January meeting. So again, the intent today was to get some scope in my hands so I can help develop this application in the, in the project that the council would like to move forward, so... And jumping back to the four handles you have in front of you, again, the map with the bolded items, I would like to talk about a few items on there. Item B, which at the intersection of Sixteenth Street and Fifth Avenue. H, which is kinda the entrance to the football field area, the athletic field, and then also the second entrance to the elementary school. And then D, which is on the north side of kinda the riding arena, northeast corner of the hockey arena there, adding a crossing there for kinda a goal path that goes through the county facilities there. And then X is what's at the intersection of Eleventh and Fifth, just to the east of the intermediate school there. So those four intersections are shown in the infrastructure recommendations, the next two sheet, and I'll back up and add a couple more, AA and BB. And that's Sixteenth Street extended from the high school or the intersection of Fifty Seven to the west to the dump road or County Twenty-One. Those we'll also talk about in the infrastructure recommendations. So, again, jumping back to infrastructure recommendations, item B, again, that's the intersection of Sixteenth and Fifth Avenue. We'll go to the problem, with the problem when the Safe Homes and School Planning Grant was put together, when the planners that, from Mindot that were hired to do this infrastructure planning grant, myself and the Manorville City Engineer, school staff, actually some students were involved too, what, what the problems or the issues that were, what came up there was that there was an uncomfortable crossing for pedestrians, there was drivers moving quickly through the intersection, so that's ultimately the problem there. So what the Safe Homes and School Planning Grant and the infrastructure grant we're looking for is now is how do we solve those problems? So what recommendation came out of that was to look at installing curb extensions or bump outs, which we've talked about extensively. And then an ADA compliant pad ramp and a high visibility crosswalk and advanced stop bars. So that is kinda the recommendation that, that helps meet those needs. And now we talked about some other previous discussion, Mr. Buck mentioned maintenance, so definitely that doesn't say anything about maintenance in there, but it maintains is a problem with bump outs, no doubt about it. And Coy, I think you mentioned trying to design for drivers that are idiots or, you know, not gonna slow down for anything, which I agree with too, we can't, can't design our way out of everything. So those are the discussions before the council tonight, is what do we do with that and is there other options? So what I put over there in the right-hand column there, the one to five, is kinda my different alternative options that I came up with for discussion night for the council. So number one, again, is what's just initially recommended, curb extension of the bump outs at the intersection. Second one was, we could potentially have curb extensions on the north side of the roadway only, that's a T intersection, so maybe we bump down the north curb line to, to provide the curb and gutter bumping out on the road, will slow the drivers down, will provide a shorter walking distance for the pedestrians crossing Sixteenth Street. Could be effective yet, but we could lose some effectiveness of the, the reasons why we create the full bump outs. We could also, Doug, you mentioned painted curb extensions, instead of actually bringing the curb and gutter out, just paint curb and, paint curb and gutter and paint a no walk zone, provide some pavilions or different markings, a bump grade to show where these bump outs are, that, that can be somewhat effective to slow down some traffic there. Go ahead.
What if we would have the turning lanes in the middle of the road where you had double line all the time and you kept the traffic to the outside lanes? You'd have narrowed way down then anyway, and then still have your sign in and everything. You know what I mean?
Like a center median?
Well, I don't wanna be lying.
We, we could look at that, painting something, painting a center median, you sense?
Well, I mean, you'd have the traffic narrowed down with lines. And then, I don't know if, if anything, it, it sounded like, I, I know this is for kids getting to school, but it sounded like there was just as much or more hindrance there to the traffic with the, so with the lighting, you were planning on stopping the walking people too with light. Or crossing...
That's what we talked about.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, when you live out there, you say you can pull up there and...
Yeah, you know, I look at the...
You keep coming and coming and you wait and wait.
And the problem is...
You know, so we gotta stop things both ways. We stop the cars, let a group cross, let them go again, let them build up and, you know, somehow.
The, the, the problem identified, you know, the issue, you know, drivers moving quickly through the intersection. And it's the opposite part two. Two mornings ago, I sat there at seven thirty-five for ten minutes, I didn't move. So nobody was moving quickly. You, you just couldn't go, cause there were kids crossing continuously, people trying to turn left, people trying to turn right, it's, it's just a messed up intersection with the buses just going, you know, they'll stop for each other and stop traffic for a few minutes to let all the other buses out. I mean, it, it, it's more than just people going fast, cause there are, there are people that drive fast, they don't stop for the people crossing, I get that. But it's also the opposite side two, to keep the kids safe.
So I believe that was one of the other discussion items within the Safe Homes and School Plan, not necessarily this infrastructure portion, was to have a potential crosswalk there, or sort of the crossing guard there, to put a stop to the kids at some point, say hold on, let the traffic go through here, mayor's pretty important, we gotta let them, let them go here.
No, I think, no, it's not about me at all, it's about that impatient driver who's been sitting there, sitting there and sitting there, and they've gotta get to work too when they see kids going, every fifteen, twenty feet, one will come out with their head down on their phone, instead of bunching them up where ten of them cross, now the traffic is going a bit, then they get impatient and try to, I mean, I watch them try to squeeze between two kids that are going, should they do it? No, but there should be some education on the other side too that, hey, you know...
So I think that's where the, the crossing guard came in to help, help balance that, because that's where we have maybe a little bit of imbalance between traffic and, and the students and the pedestrians there. So that, that is another component that may be able to supplement any infrastructure improvements we make at that intersection to provide that, that crossing guard.
How much is a stoplight?
That's what I was gonna ask.
I mean, is that, I mean, as far as these curbs and gutters, you pull all this stuff out and maintenance costs ongoing forever and ever, putting in a traffic signal, is that more than just putting in a traffic signal? We can't just go take one from Rochester and they won't miss it for a few days and try it out and, you know...
I know that intersection's big dumb though, it'll scare you, it's a million dollars for you to know it.
Yeah.
When they want to upgrade an intersection, but that would probably sell broadly, you know, in the...
The other thing, you're not gonna meet a lot of other warrants, so what do we look at installing a stoplights, we look at warrants, so it's, you just can't just say have one warrant that would warrant a stoplight, in this case slowing down pedestrian traffic. We look at other traffic impacts and...
It's really an hour and forty, an hour in the afternoon.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
That's the biggest thing, it's two hours.
That would lead to a crossing guard with maybe a little safer intersection is ultimately what we're, we're going for.
Does that intersection now have a button that pedestrians can use? Okay.
I think that the flasher, there's a flasher there, so it might have a button on it, but it's probably gonna have a constant herd of kids crossing the road, if you will.
You're trying the ones that go to the elementary, but then they go to the other side of Fifth and walk over towards the middle school, they don't...
That's the problem, there's two crosswalks there.
There's two crosswalks, but it's only...
To Fifth, across Sixteen.
Yeah.
So some will walk to the one on the west side of the road, some will walk to the one on the east, and you got kids...
Not the one on the east has a button.
Needs to be one crosswalk, and then you go down and cross to the middle school at the one on Fifth. But that, again, it's education and the signage and...
And part of that too, believe it or not, is the kids have found out that because the way the school line them up coming out of the middle school, they won't allow them to cross Fifth until a certain time. So they've learned that if they go up and they can run across, or they go to the south and run across, instead of using the cross guard, because the school is putting a limitation on them to, so they can't get over to the elementary to pick up their younger kids. So there, there's a timeframe there where they can't cross, and the kids have learned how to bypass that. So there's education part on the school too, where we gotta, they gotta put a little more condescension to letting these kids get across, cause there's kids that have to get across to get to the middle, to the elementary to pick up their siblings, to get them on the bus. So there's, there's education on both parts.
So again, I think that was the second component of the infrastructure, assuming the Safe Homes and School Planning Grant, was the potential for a crossing guard there So again, I think that was the second component of the infrastructure, assuming the Safe Homes School planning grant was a potential for a crossing guard there to help create those gaps in the traffic and create a better flow of pedestrians. But with that said, so now how are we, are we, are we interested in what direction is the council going for? Potential for infrastructure improvements to maybe help supplement a crossing guard there. And I know that discussing again about a stoplight, I just, a stoplight is going to be one very costly. And I guess stopping guard could go a long ways to creating those gaps that a stoplight would be intended to do, it'd be more of a cost effective measure.
Especially an hour twice a day.
Yeah, no, the problem is two hours a day, Monday and Friday during the school year. That's the issue, so.
So, you know, if we, if we were looking at the potential curb extension or a painted curb extension that would still benefit other times of the day when that pedestrian traffic maybe isn't there, but there's higher speeds during a non-school situation that would create a slowdown effect at that, kind of that bottleneck where you're being pinched off with the curb extension. And then again, the amount of time that that pedestrian's in a traffic lane or from curb to curb is shortened up. There's a lot shorter exposure, if you will, from the, to the vehicle traffic. So that's another advantage of going with one of those options. Or Doug, you mentioned the, you know, the center of median there to provide a spot potentially for that pedestrian to stop in the center lane to allow traffic to, to pass. That's kind of on my, lower on my preferred, preferred list because it has against the maintenance issues and whatnot.
Where you got the crosswalks too, if there's a way to paint no parking on the curb, is that what you mean by curb extensions? I mean, make it wider gaps, because right now you got people that pull up and they'll park into that no parking spot. And then kids are looking around and if it was wider to keep.
Keep the traffic away to.
So it's a bigger view for everybody.
Yep.
Because kids are small and you start parking SUVs there and vans, nobody sees them. You know, people are distracted. If there's a way you could widen that out, that would make a big difference.
So one of the other options we have in there is option number four, which is, you know, just increase the crosswalk visibility. Maybe we need to look at reconfiguring the crosswalk and provide just to ultimately just better signing. You know, it's not going to necessarily get you that slowing down effect from the vehicles and gets you that shorter, shorter walking distance. But the more that we can make that crosswalk visible, maybe better to again, supplement that with the, with the crossing guard and work with the school on that. And obviously it's going to be less costly than putting concrete in the ground and renewing pavement and whatnot and less maintenance too, so. Again, looking for, and we don't, that's maybe the largest discussion item, but we have some other points along the, in the, along that roadway and in the plan too that, you know, we got to, we got to talk about some different options here, so.
Let's give you direction on this particular one first and then move to the next one.
Sure.
Any definitive thoughts or suggestions you want to, I guess I would prefer not to see concrete curb and gutter, stuff poured out into the street where it's at now. Just the ongoing maintenance issue. And we can do with painted with the, your number four, increased crosswalk visibility, signing and flasher system.
And possibly a cross guard.
And then work with the school on a crossing guard.
That's going to make it.
Because if for some reason that doesn't work and it's an absolute failure, failure, we can always go back at some point in the future and put a curb out there and put these. If that becomes the ultimate, this is the way we got to try to solve the issue. We can always go back and do it.
On Sixteenth, I, I agree with that. Being we're going to make, that's going to be a major thoroughfare at some point.
Yes.
You know, now we maybe can have a little different idea on, on a area on Fifth where you've got a certain one.
Yeah, we can do different.
And now we're talking about all smaller kids too. And that, that, that isn't one, you know, that's a certain area town out to Sixteenth, that, that's never going to have the volume that potentially Sixteenth could have. I, I don't think anyway.
I hope not.
But the, the square corners, I'm not too in favor of any where out there where the buses are going to be making the corner. Because now you, you square that up, now they're have to use half the other lane to get around the corner.
And I watch those buses turn every morning. There's days when the traffics, they're inching out to turn left off of Fifth onto Sixteenth, when the bus is coming on Sixteenth. And the bus basically has to wave the car to because the bus still doesn't have the turning radius to turn. And I think if you square those, again, I'm not a traffic expert, but just looking at the map, I think it'd be.
Yeah, they're not quite drawn the way we did it on the design of them, but that's one of the concerns we have is the turning traffic in there.
So I would throw out the rest of the council that number four, increased crosswalk visibility, signing and flasher system, you know, painted curb, something without concrete.
Does that include the painted curb extensions, which again is, if you go to your second sheet there, the, the, the middle right picture there showing that, you see the blue and the orange kind of check area, we wouldn't have to necessarily do that, we may paint town blue or something. But creating more of a bump out there with again, the traffic cones kind of showing where the curb would be in a bump out situation. That's something that we could look at incorporating into a increased crosswalk visibility.
Because that.
That's just painted, there's no curb there.
Be painted in cones and if it doesn't work, we can always scrape the paint up and give her the.
Chip seal and that.
So yeah, I mean, I guess I would make that suggestion and.
The cones are just adding a little extra space on the crosswalk for your paint, you know what I mean, for the parking. Anytime you can widen that out.
So it's going to give some of the effect that we were looking for in the bump outs.
More cost effective.
That's a little less effective, but.
And the snow piles can still go down through there and not have to go around the bump outs around traffic around at the same time.
We'll have a discussion on what we do as another winner, if we can pull them out and have it function a little different, we could, we could look at that.
Does that sound good there, buddy?
How mu, how much bridge is on Sixteenth? Even to bump one of them out, that's pretty flat, you got to go back quite a ways to make that water come up.
We'd have to put a storm sewer catch basin.
Oh yeah, we're good, yeah.
We end up tearing pavement out of the intersection, we have a hundred and fifty thousand stuck in the intersection by the time we bump it all off.
Okay, go with paint and.
I think that, you know, with extra crosswalk and extra parking.
Does that give you, does that give you a number?
I'm going to get out, I'll be putting cost to these directions to you and me and bring it back in the form of a final approval by the city council, so.
Okay.
So maybe I'll jump down to H there. H is immediately east of, of that intersection.
The next one, yes.
The kind of the, the next one.
To the high school.
Yeah, that's the one to the athletic facility is in the second entrance to the intermediate school there. Again, what, what the staff or what the plan recommended was some curb extension bump outs. What I was thinking more again was the, the painted curb extensions or we would just leave a crosswalk. Not sure much pedestrian traffic's going to be received there. It's not probably going to be as intense as the intersection of Sixteenth and Fifth.
Not a lot there, but there's.
Community Ed takes.
Community Ed.
But what we are going to be looking at adding is we are going to create a crosswalk there and extend the path down from community ed, which now kind of goes down the driveway. We're going to add a path onto the driveway and create a crosswalk there, so.
Get them off the driveway.
Correct, get them off the driveway. And the other thing is the school, I believe, is looking at improving that parking lot and the entrance coming out of the athletic field. So we would, we would work with them on, on providing a pedestrian crossing there and lining up those drives a little bit better.
This is part of that same program, moving that path and.
Correct, yep, correct, that'd be part of this application.
I like that.
So the question, and then again, in the direction we're looking for is, is what do we incorporate through kind of the roadway section there if we're adding another access point or another cross in there at H?
I think all you would really need there is just a crosswalk, I don't think you need the painted extensions.
I, I would agree with that too. I don't know if you need to paint the extensions there, there's not that.
There's not enough there. I mean, if you get the sidewalk coming down so they have that, the kids will be, start using that and then we got the crosswalk.
And that'd be a similar crossing that we have farther to the east to the residential subdivision on the other side of the creek too. Would just be a crosswalk painted with some stop bars and a restroom flasher system.
Sound good to you?
Sound good, Doug, mine?
Yep. R is on the other side of the bridge here?
So what you just said. Nope, R is not going to be as part of this project.
Okay.
It's not bold end, that's just a future trail that may come through there, another crossing. If that residential area where the R figure is, there, the letter is, if that was to develop out, could be some pressure there to create another crossing. But it's not as part of this project. So maybe jumping over to D and X, which is by the south side of the elementary school. D there, there's actually, if you look at the letter K there, we're actually looking at working with the county and developing a trail there. So all the pedestrian traffic that comes up Fifth Avenue ultimately crosses currently at D. And it's actually four times as many kids cross at that point of Eleventh Street than it does at X and Q combined. So pretty shocking to us to understand that there's that many kids crossing at, at the point D there.
And that's part of how they sneak away, you know, bypass the crossing there.
Yeah, I don't doubt it, so. Something to do it all to the winter too, there's basically a goat path.
Talk to the kids and they'll tell you flat out and it was because of the rules, but they can't get across and can't get over in time to get their siblings to get on the bus.
So there's, there's actually at D there, there's no crossing at all right now?
There's not a straight crossing.
There is no straight.
It's a goat path to an unmarked crossing that's used four times more than the other two crossings that are marked. So we come into kids and we're out there, it's pretty shocking.
Yeah, pretty good path to the fairgrounds there.
Part of our work will be working with the fairgrounds there to actually pave a path to D. Because our thought is, is we don't, engineers aren't real good at changing people's methods of getting places. So we need to work with it and pave out the trail is kind of our thought, so.
Just start following their, their foot paths and.
Yep, pay behind them.
Because they're going to do it, I mean.
We're not real good at changing some behaviors, so. So again, I'm looking at D there, you know, the same old discussion there of install high visibility crosswalk, looking at curb extensions and at some stop bars. So if, if kind of the feel there, maybe the increased crosswalk visibility by actually establishing a crosswalk and provide some signing would be what I'm thinking the council direction would be. We could again, look at some curb extensions there, there's a driveway there, maybe a little difficult. What else made it, made a crosswalk is the direction the council would be going.
I think so, there's just a standard crossing.
There's a curb right there. Everything, I think the bump outs would be an issue.
Yeah, we have the driveway there, it'd be a little bit.
Crosswalk.
Crosswalk could be the easiest in Manhattan.
And if there's that many, you know, if you've got the lights, you know.
Just make it safe and, yep, effective.
Couple months there in the winter.
The next item is item number X, which is Eleventh Street and Fifth Avenue, which is on the east side of the elementary school. They recommended, again, there was, there was a wide intersection which encouraged drivers to move more quickly approaching and moving through the crossing there. What ultimately I think is the direction the council would be going would be increasing the crosswalk visibility and signing. There was a discussion on considering a raised sidewalk there, which is ultimately the roadway coming up to the sidewalk elevation. So ultimately creates kind of a speed bumper, a speed table there. And I'm assuming the council wasn't interested in going that direction, but that was mentioned as a potential solution in the Safe Homes School planning grant, planning documents. So did include that and there's number three, so. Again, that, that actually intersection isn't quite as used as often, I think, item number D.
I'll tell you, that doesn't turn me off as much as the bump outs, the reasoning of, you know, where you're, they're forcing this whole, I mean. But it seems like when you have them, they go faster in between and then they hit their brakes again, you know, there's places that.
I agree with that. Speed tables.
You gotta remember.
And they get a lot of, a lot of stop signs too, they like to speed between the stop signs.
The majority of the kids, when they leave the school, they leave out the south exit entrance of the school. They don't go out to east, they go out to south. And that's why the, all that crossing is over there and not, because they don't come out the front door, they go out the side door. Because that's where parents pick them up, that's where they, so they automatically go out that way and that's why that's most of the crossing is.
And tell them that way.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming that's an increased crosswalk visibility and signing?
Yep.
Okay. And then lastly there, we had AA, BB, which AA is the crossing of the trail across Manorville Avenue, Highway Fifty Seven. And BB is the extension of that trail through the, kind of to the south side of the dump, to the county road, dump road there. That's a project that we've had some discussions, the staff has with some development to the south of that Sixteenth Street extension and also to the north. Now we've had some conversation with the county also on securing some right of way there on Sixteenth Street. So I think that's something that's going to be coming back to the council at a future time. So that's what we thought initially, that'd be a good item to, the trail would be a good item to include in this application. But the application also has a right of way item to discuss in the application. So MINDOT will look at any kind of holes in our plan here. My, my concern here is that we don't have the right of way secured for the east half of the trail, which would be kind of from like southeast corner of the landfill to the east to Manorville Avenue. So I'd be looking at eliminating that sculpt from this project. But we would include along the south side of the landfill over to the dump road, include that in this application. And then we'd show the trail from, across the private property from, again, the east side of landfill, Two Fifty Seven has a future trail that may actually could potentially be built before we get to building this project. Simply due to right of way reasons and our application being looked a little bit more negatively or, and somewhat of a disadvantage by not being able to say that we secure or have secured that right of way across that private property. With that said, the, the county, we've had initial discussions with them about allowing us to build Sixteenth Street through their property with the trail. So the assumption there that we would just say that we're going to, we've been working with the county to secure that right of way.
So at that point, you're thinking of that, that trail on the north or south side of it?
Sixteenth. I think, well, it works better to the north. Going to the west, but when we get to the, to the intersection, might be better to the south. So we've worked that, I think it would build it on the north side of the Sixteenth Street.
Well, yeah, it looks like everyone's forced to cross there now anyway, right?
Fifty Seven on the south side.
You know, they're forced to cross Sixteenth.
Yeah, they're forced to go north to south there.
Yeah.
Route of the high school.
But, you know, when roads put in, it's going to be filled in there, I mean, you've got nothing but.
Correct, and if, and if the, when we looked at the preferred intersection or control intersection at some point, what MINDOT would prefer, if Fifty Seven was rebuilt, would be a roundabout there. And there would be sidewalk on both sides of that round, kind of all around the roundabout connecting any trails, so.
I was just thinking of that, how do you.
How do you look?
Sidewalk around a roundabout, I guess, I've never seen anybody walking around a roundabout, that'd be dangerous to walk around a roundabout when they're approaching out there.
That's supposed to get curb for.
Supposed to, so as you, as you enter into a roundabout and come to the yield sign, you first have to, you have the sidewalk to be at that point. So you'd have to first yield to pedestrians and then yield to the cars within the, sort of first around the wall. But this is somewhat problematic because you tend to look the other way, so you got to be watching for.
Full direction.
But I think a training, a relearning for.
I think every roundabout that's been built has included pedestrian facilities in it, even the ones out in the rural areas. But it would. Off the curb. So, so I guess that's my recommendation again, is to eliminate the eastern section of that trail from Fifty Seven to the dump road there just due to the right of way concerns to make our application a little more attractive. And that may allow us to allocate more budgets in other areas and some items.
Okay.
So yeah, again, I wanted to.
Is there more pieces of trail that we need around the school there? Or you got it all figured in?
Well, if we have budget, I may look at Y, which would go up to the Cass and Meadows area there, there's, and there's a park up there. And that's been talked about with the, with the school to ultimately kind of get by the athletic field and tie into our, our park and after that Cass and Meadows area, so.
Because they're ready to cut through there now.
I did not bring it up.
Because you know they're cutting through there right now.
Don't you all agree on that, that we're doing it, we should try to take care of that area with what we are thinking of, the, you know, project? If it fits in the budget?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's obviously on, you got it labeled, so if it fits, it fits, but yeah.
And the, the school is pretty, pretty restrictive or gives pretty good direction they want to stay with in their budget of the seventy-five thousand of their cost along with the seventy-five thousand the city costs with the three hundred, three hundred thousand application cost. So I'm going to have to put kind of the pencil and paper here to get a, a good project number together. So that's what we'll be bringing back to you and the school for final approval here in January. With the intent to make the application submit on January twelfth. And then again, this is a competitive grant, so we're talking somewhat hypothetical that we give the grant.
And the next one with that Y is, it's not really a safety issue. You know, they're not crossing roads there to get through those woods and they all come up through our yard and then go across the soccer fields anyway.
Yep.
So if they have a clear path that's not through the woods anymore, now there's soccer fields there. So to me, as I look, don't think that's the least priority because they're, you're not, kids aren't crossing streets to get to the school from there. They're just, they used to go through that little swale through the woods at the drainage ditch. But now they have those soccer fields out there, at least it's a moat place for them to walk. Wintertime, there's no path to shovel or you know.
I think they'll do it.
Well, I know they do, they drive their snowbills back and forth.
Couple of proof is the path.
Anyway.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see.
Do you have a direction you need from us?
Yep, we'll see you in January with the final application.
Looking good, Brandon.
Thank you for the clarification on that too, and your patience will, will put in our questions, so. Appreciate it. Onto L, our attorney's report. And we are going to go to a closed session for a little bit. We'll reopen the meeting when the closed session's done and we're going to close the meeting to discuss litigation strategy. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Bruce, appreciate it.